So you don't gotta go like too far out?
Two years.
Of course.
Testing?
Absolutely.
All right.
Botanical gardens.
We'll call the meeting to order here. If you can stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Grokow?
Councilmember Kay.
President.
Councilmember Strowman.
Here.
Councilmember Engle, excused. Mayor Pro Tim Walker.
Here.
And Mayor Hagan.
Here. So it looks like we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. City Manager, do you want to make a statement on that, or would you?
I'll make a very brief statement. We do have a video that we want to show.
It's showing.
It's showing.
All right.
This is recognizing all the staff in our Public Works crew as well as their years of service. We have many, many tenured employees, which is a good testament, I think, to not only the management, but the crew. And then we have our newest member here, Gavin, that you see. And a little bit of fun. A little bit of fun for you all.
That is good.
Well, it's one group that oftentimes gets overlooked and doesn't get a lot of, I guess, attaboys out in the street. But it's obviously very important to how a city runs. If you don't have water, or your sewage is backed up, or a lot of things aren't working properly, the city kind of falls apart, right? So I'm glad we're kind of bringing you guys to the forefront and saying thank you, because it's well deserved.
So we should present the proclamation. We have a couple of staff members here to accept, and then maybe Justin will say a few words after.
Play the video one more time, please.
Sorry?
Play the video one more time, please.
Yes, I do want to say on behalf of Public Works, thank you very much for the acknowledgement. You're absolutely right, Mayor. It's hard. Public Works doesn't get recognition a lot of the times. But I kind of feel obligated to, as much as Chief's doing for his department, you know, I can't really come and say how many sewer lines Jake and John have cleaned in the last month and stuff like that, like Palomino with the DUIs. But this is just a small way of saying thank you to the guys. Public Works is ran by the seven of those guys that are down there. They, every day, without any question, do what's asked of them regardless of how bad the situation is. We all know how the last few weeks were with us with the accidents and the railroad incident and just in general. We've become a department where we put fires out constantly to where we're not. We're a reaction department rather than proactive, which we would like to be. But with that being said, I've worked in a few different cities, and the reason why I'm still here after 18 years is because they make me and the city look great and they do a great job. So, yeah, when they're out and about, please show them your love, because they deserve it. They worked their tail off without any acknowledgement whatsoever. So thank you. And thanks to John.
Mr. Mayor, would you allow to make comments?
Yeah.
Jake and John, can you come up to the podium?
Get him, Sean, get him.
Justin didn't pay me to do this, but I'm speaking as both a resident and a council member. When I say this from the bottom of my heart, I really, truly appreciate both of you, both personally and as a council member. When it's hitting the fan, you're always there. Jake, I'll never forget, ever, that time you were on Yosemite last summer, Saturday, 11 o'clock. You're literally covered in mud, and you were still smiling. And you were happy to do what you were doing, because you recognized the impact that you have on 7,400 residents of Esclon. And both of you guys make that guy look really good on a daily basis. But both from a council member's standpoint and a resident, a resident, you guys rock and keep up the phenomenal work, because the city would not be half as responsive as we are for our residents if it weren't for you guys. So, thank you. I know thank you doesn't seem like much, but truly, thank you for all of your hard work.
Would you like to make a statement, or you can if you'd like?
Pretty easy to be Public Works, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wait, wait, wait a second, wait a second, wait a second. No, I'm kidding. I won't be as long-winded as him, but I do want to say thank you guys for everything that you do. It's you guys that keep our city what our city is and what people see when they drive around. So, you know, thank you guys very much, and especially the smile on your face, you know, every time we see, you know, you guys are always smiling, waving, you know, being part of the community. So definitely appreciate you guys very much.
Well, we'll, I guess, move on to the next thing, but it's nice to see, so keep up the good work. So you have an update on Main Street?
Yes, we do.
Improvement project?
Straight into another Public Works project. Our goal here is to provide an update to the council and the community prior to a project going out to bid. So you know, over the last couple of years, we've really hit hard, the capital improvement projects, sidewalk infills, pavement rehabilitation, crossings, that type of thing. This is a project that's been in the works for some time. We got a grant a number of years ago, wanted to make some improvements to the park. We're now looking really at the periphery of the park due to some public sentiment and concerns that BNSF had with making improvements into the actual park itself. So if we go to the kind of second slide, we can blow it up a bit. So now, using the grant that we received from SJCOG, San Joaquin Council of Governments, the plan here is to install sidewalk on the park side of Main Street. You will all know there are no sidewalks on that side of the street. We do have parking. The parking will not be affected. And really, we have all the right of way needed for a sidewalk project, and so we're installing sidewalks and then improving intersections along Main Street. And so you've seen the ones that are improved, that's the bulbouts, that's the planters, that's the bricks. We're improving additional intersections as well as sidewalk up to the library, up to and around the library. So some of this sidewalk, if we go to the next slide, will go all the way to St. John and really trying to make that entire connection along Main Street to St. John, as you can see in the bottom portion of the slide there. So that is the intent of the project. It's a large project, and we hope to go out to bid here in the near future.
Okay. This is just in the presentation group, right? So?
For your information.
Love to ask questions?
Sure.
So how are we coordinating this with both the farmer's market and with Park Feet?
We looked at the calendar of events out at the park in downtown, and we have found a pocket from January to March, essentially, where there are no events, and that's when we will plan to do this work. And we'll notify the applicant, the contractor, that that's the window that must be hit.
So if it's gonna start construction in January, when are you planning on going out to bid?
We will determine the best time, but we will probably go out early to align and put in there that we want to hit this window, so that they can line up their construction, you know, efforts, basically.
Sounds good. Any other questions from the dais? All right. And is this gonna come back to us, or do we put it out to public?
You can get comments from the public if you want, but nothing after. It's just a presentation.
Any comments out in the crowd?
That's, yeah, that's part of the plan.
They have been included, Gary.
Any other questions? No? Anyone online? No? All right, we'll come to the consent calendar. Does anyone up the dais want to pull any of these?
I don't want to pull anything, Mr. Mayor, but I will be abstained from voting on item number five.
Five, okay. Anyone else? Public want to pull any of these? No? All righty then, we'll come back to vote. I guess?
Scroll down, so I can see. Mine, five, is on staff communications.
Consider awarding the 20.
Oh, got it, okay. Yeah, I was on the wrong page.
Did you want to pull any?
Nope.
Okay. Bring it back for a vote, then?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And no nays. Okay, we'll move on to staff communications.
Great, we'll start on that side of the room.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So the first item we have here is the treasurer's report. This shows us the cash position for all the different funds that we have. This is as of April. And following that, we have some reports, basically just letting us see what we're, what our expenses are for this quarter so far and as of that date. We have been looking at this as management staff each week and updating the cash. Of course, I update that every morning. So these are snapshots as of these dates. And so we're doing pretty good. We are keeping a close eye on all the expenses. We have a little bit more revenue than we expected, and as the year finalizes, we will probably see a little, a bit of that pullback, too. There's some, for Jilton, we collect some monies from them for the garbage, and then we pay them back, and we keep a small piece, so that still has to happen, and that's gonna reduce that a little bit. But overall, we're doing, we're doing well. We are still waiting on the audit. That's the other item that we have to update. We had expected to have a preliminary report today. We did not get it, so I'll be calling them again tomorrow. I called a couple of times today to annoy them, but I still didn't get my report. So I'll be working on that this week, and I do expect that is wrapping up. I provided them a few documents Friday and again this morning, so it's just a continual, very long.
Do you know what would be holding that back?
At this point, it's still the same problem that they had. They're trying to proof the numbers from last year.
Okay.
Not the current year. They're happy with the current year. They're still trying to produce all of their mapping and reports, and I think they have made significant progress. I helped them with one. I deconstructed a couple of old years and was able to map some things out and give them some answers that they were looking for. So the reports that I provided this morning were just updates for our banking partners. Those letters, they kind of expire every 30 days, so we were up for another one, so I was like, just give them another one, so they have it.
And just add to that, when you switch auditors, the new auditor very frequently, especially if they can't make a number fit, there's a certain level of coordination, communication, information shared with, from the old auditor to the new auditor, and that communication has not been as timely as we would have liked, has not been as helpful as we would have liked, and therefore, there's been some delays with the new auditor because of lack of information from past models.
Fair to say you don't think the new auditor is dragging their feet, then?
No, they did have some staffing issues, but no, they're absolutely not dragging their feet. It's really communication with prior information.
Thank you. That's all I had. Do you have any more? Sorry about that.
We had, oh, no problem at all. We sent Michelle to training, and I think that she enjoyed that training. We got some good feedback from that for her clerking duties, and we've just been continuing to, where we can, provide training for staff to improve efficiencies. I passed probation, so. And I'm very happy to have passed probation, and I will do my utmost to provide even more reports and whatever else we need in the coming year. And I think that's about it for me.
Hey, one question, Chief. How did the training go? You feel like it was fruitful?
It was very informative.
Yeah?
I learned a lot. It was, my brain was tired after day two, but it was good.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear that.
Made some good contacts as well.
Sorry about that, Chief.
So kind of not a whole lot in terms of volume, but there were some, quite a few event, eventful incidents that happened in April. There was an attempted homicide over at the Coley Apartments. Our officers did an amazing job. They responded, I believe, the response time was within five minutes. And then from within five minutes of responding on scene, they had the suspect in custody and the victim to safety. Ambulance got in, got a rush to the hospital. She did have life-threatening injuries, but she was able to recover from those due to prompt medical care. There was also a DUI collision on the 27th over on Highway 120 at Plaza. It was a DUI-related collision. There was a fatality, and then the driver was seriously injured. And on April 25th, we swore in our newest reserve officer, Eric Maripau. He is from the Alameda County Sheriff's Department. He's been 27 years with that agency. He retired as a lieutenant. He wanted to get back into law enforcement. He's been teaching at ITT Tech and wanted to work for a smaller agency and do community-oriented policing, and so he started with us, and he is, got more experience than all of our line officers and sergeants combined, and is zooming through the FTO process, and he'll be, should be clearing here shortly. And then Officer Gunter also cleared FTO on Friday. He started on February 18th. After about a 12 and a half, 13-week FTO program, he cleared FTO. And by all accounts, from all of his FTOs, he's gonna be a great addition to the department. He's got a great attitude. He's smart. He's got drive. And one of the issues that we kind of sometimes run into with new trainees, he's got, he doesn't have, he currently, or he already has the concept of small-town policing. And so he's very friendly, very engaging with the community, and kind of understands the education over enforcement aspect, that just because you can doesn't mean you have to, and so far, has been, is doing great. And then?
Keep up the good work. You're doing a great job. You have any questions for Chief? Any questions for Chief?
And then I also want to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Also want to say thank you to Public Works, Public Works Appreciation Week. They help us immensely on all sorts of calls. Almost anytime we have a major incident involving the roadways, they're there to help with traffic, traffic enforcement, block off roadways so our officers can stay on scene and take care of business. And I also want to give them kudos on the, what was it, the 7th?
Yeah.
It was the train versus pedestrian over on the BNSF tracks. There was that incident they helped with, and then there was also the TC out in the county. They responded out there with equipment and helped, helped get people extracted, and they did a great job. And Officer Harrison was on scene and said that they were amazing, and he wanted to give them the credit they're due.
Thank you.
Well, we've got a lot of hat tipping to you, so don't take it too.
It's only one week a year, Mayor. I mean, let's just keep it coming. It's okay. I'll take it. Now, with that being said, I mean, I'll go ahead and start out with that. It is, it is nice, National Public Works Week, to have all the acknowledgement, but as Jake Cook said, we're not the type that needs the acknowledgement, but it is nice to have. And it truly, I mean, we thank the Public Works, but it really kind of truly starts with council, our city manager, and the manager team that I have. We do a lot of collaborating on Tuesdays and come up with plans together. It's truly not just Public Works. It's a, it's a team aspect, and we, I do appreciate it. Makes all of our jobs easier, makes us all look good. So everybody really in this room, including you guys, deserve credit this week, and I appreciate it. With that being said, a reminder, this Wednesday, I thought it was last Wednesday, but I was wrong, this Wednesday's farmer's market, so hopefully we could see you guys out there. It's gonna be a little bit of a warm one. We do have shade up in the area, but look out for that. Talking to farmer's market organizer, it sounds like we're gonna have a few more vendors than we did the first, the first week out there, so I hope to see you folks out there. Also, too, want to mention, too, about the last three years, myself and a few guys in Public Works have been working with the garden, Esconde Garden Club, on a Blue Star Memorial. And finally, that Blue Star Memorial will be inducted this weekend at the community center at 9:30. And for everybody that doesn't know what the Blue Star is, it's basically a collective appreciation of acknowledgement of the sacrifice made by service members and their families. The garden club came to me with this idea, wanted to put up a sign to represent our armed forces for all that they do. It's taken a while for donations to come in, find the right location, but with Jake and John, they took a big lead in it, and I hope that you guys are able to see here in the next few weeks, at the corner of Arthur and Escalombola there at the community center. Well, there will be a science, not there, but we'll be installed Thursday, but completely have redone all the landscaping, have done uplighting. It really is amazing, the work they've done. I don't know if I'm okay to say this, but I'll go ahead and say it anyway. Hopefully, some of the funds that we are using is from our Measure P to help show the community where some of this money's going, to show how long this is going to be there. We hope this is here for years and years and years, the way it looks. It's turned out great. If you guys are in the area, 9 o'clock on Monday, about a half-hour ceremony there at the community center, we'd like to see you guys there. And that's all for Public Works. Unless you have any questions.
Only thing I say is keep up the good work. You're doing a great job, you know?
Thank you, appreciate it.
And we've got a real, real good team, so I'm proud, proud of all you guys. You know, you make all of us look good up here, so thank you.
Thank you.
So any questions at all? No? All righty.
Okay. At the last meeting, there was a question about a approved tree list. We went back and just verified what Justin probably knew, but I didn't really, that in 2023, so just two years ago, we did go through a process to update the approved tree list. And we worked with a consultant that we already have on board, and their landscape architect, CSG, they do our plan check and inspection. We worked with a local landscape company in town, Robert Swift, and then our staff to identify trees that are appropriate for in front of yards, in planner areas, and in and around sidewalks. And so we do have a relatively small set of approved trees that we will use moving forward from 2023 on.
And does that kind of include like the actual process of planting? Like I know in some of the cities, they'll put them deeper, significantly deeper than the, you know, street level?
Not necessarily the process of planting. It tells you, once the tree's planted, how that tree will grow and what it will do. The process of planting now is just kind of involved with me, when these new development comes in, the contractors come in, on verifying how they're doing it truly.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, so I think to answer your question, yes, we have thought through where, how to plant so deep. We want to get the water down instead of surface watering, right? You know, even things like root barriers, to do everything we can to not get that root, you know, system on the top, to get it driving down.
Well, ideally, you know, if we can prevent having to mess with the concrete, that's always best, you know?
Absolutely.
I do want to just mention, too, one thing that we want everybody to keep in mind. Once, you know, even though we do have the approved tree list, we tell you how to put the tree in the right tree. It still is on the homeowner to treat that tree the right way, at least the first few years of its maturity for that tree to take, regardless of what tree it is and how it's planted. If it's not cared for at the beginning stages, those root systems will come and make a hindrance on the property.
I know this kind of sounds basic, but do we give them like a checklist of like, how do you take care of a tree? You know what I'm saying?
I can't say that we do, no.
I mean, it seems basic, but, but it's also, you know, probably more complicated than most people think.
Yeah, well, I think we could put something together as far as flyer handout or something, something like that.
Help them be able to, you know, make sure that they are good stewards of it.
Sure.
Okay.
You know, and all the efforts, still not gonna be perfect. There's still gonna be roots that get up, and, but I did want to mention and kind of share with the council and the community, in line with that, Public Works plans to remove some trees that we have on Main Street, sort of north, heading towards 120 on, at First, right? North of First, heading towards 120, because those trees are too large. We have 10 or 12 sycamore up there. They're just too large for the area, so we'll be removing those. There's a couple of pear trees, I think they're called, that just haven't taken very well. And so we'll be removing those trees and putting in trees similar to the section south of First Street on Main Street.
Okay.
And then, couple other things. Also mentioned at the last council meeting, we will be reviewing if it's feasible and how, if we do determine it feasible, to install dirt infills into existing parks. We'll be reviewing zoning for multifamily, and we're looking at landscape services for the districts as well. So the trees we had ready-made for this update, we're looking at the other three items that were shared at the council. And then, I'll just mention, you know, we're certainly thinking about the individuals and families that were affected by the two accidents we had now two weeks ago. That's, you know, pretty, pretty heavy for a community this size, especially, you know, as kids in the school system are involved and, and were present around some of these accidents. So certainly thinking about those families and all who were impacted. And I'll just share again that I will not be here for the next meeting on June 2nd. I will be away, and our staff will fill in for me. And that's it.
Well, you'll be missed, so. All righty, any questions for city manager? Any questions from the public for city manager or staff in general? Online? All right, we'll bring it back. Matters presented from the audience. The public may address the city council on any item that is on the agenda at the time the item is called. The public may also address the city council on any item not on the agenda that is within the subject matter of the city of Esconde. Each speaker is limited to a maximum of five minutes. Unused time may not be yielded to another speaker. You may state your name and address for the record, however, it is not required. Due state law, action will not be taken on an item that is not on the agenda, and except for brief responses, the council is prohibited from discussion, discussing any item on the agenda. If it requires action, it will be referred to staff and/or placed on a future agenda. The determination of whether an item is within the subject matter of the city is a discretionary decision made by the, bless you. So that being said, any matters from the audience?
Two quick questions. One, if you're gonna divide up some kind of...
Um, I have a question on that.
No, it does. Mayor, do you want me to respond to that?
Yeah, if you could.
Okay, so, um, can I see our, can you scroll down a little bit?
Yeah.
No, it's to the first page. Oh, nevermind.
Yeah.
You know, I put that in there because I wanted to provide some notice to the public. If you've donated, you made any financial contributions for campaign contributions of over two hundred fifty dollars, that's the only time it would apply.
Like, you need, like, now, coming up, we're talking about something around...
If, well, if...
Can you give like...
The Levine Act would only apply to any member of the public if they, the Levine, the Levine Act is extremely complicated. So what I would say is this is not, and that's why it says here, this is not intended to be legal advice. It's really just to alert you. If, if you, if any member of the public were to donate a campaign contribution of over two hundred fifty dollars and the limits have gone up to five hundred dollars to any individual elected official, um, and you are a, generally a party to that proceeding and that proceeding is a contract entitlement for use or permit, so it's not all proceedings, but just generally any public comment on an item that you don't have an affiliation with is not going to apply. Has to be something where you have a really vested stake in whatever is being considered by the council and you've also donated at this point over five hundred dollars in campaign contributions. And it was within the last twelve months and, 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 there's a bunch of other stuff too, but that's the high level.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification. Any other, um, statements or, or concerns from the public? Uh, we'll go to online? Okay. Um, no public hearings, so we'll go on to administrative matters, uh, number eleven.
Our transit manager is approaching, so I may suggest that we move...
Go to fourteen.
Yeah, move to item fourteen. We'll take fourteen and fifteen and then loop back to item eleven.
Okay. We'll start at fourteen then.
Okay. So I do want to clarify, we do have, um, a typo, I guess, on the, these two agenda items. These agenda items, which are generally related, having to do with two separate, uh, commissions or committees established by the council, is just to establish the committee formally via resolution and, as well as the associated policies. It is not to make appointments tonight. We have interviews scheduled for the June sixteenth meeting, um, for the Economic Development Committee and the Measure P, um, call for applicants closes this week. And then in a subsequent meeting, we will have, uh, interviews for those items. So we are not making appointments today, but, um, staff is asking the council to formally approve via resolution the formation of these two committees as well as the associated policies. So with that lead in, um, there is not, to be honest, much more to it. But the first one, item fourteen, is on a new committee, the Economic Development Committee. This is consistent with the adopted two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six strategic plan in terms of one of the priority, uh, strategic priority areas, economic development, and the creation of an economic development committee comprised of two members of the council and three members representing the business community who will meet periodically, hopefully monthly, to discuss, um, matters pertaining to economic development and will sort of be an advisory committee onto the full city council, again, pertaining to issues associated with, uh, economic development. So in the packet, we do have a resolution. Again, this is a more formal, um, establishment of the committee. And then we have provided a brief policy, it's only about two pages, which lays out the intent, purpose, um, kind of what the committee will do, who the committee is comprised of, terms, um, who the committee reports to, what, um, details a quorum, and then meeting date and times. So it's relatively simple, but it's clear for everyone heading in, this is, um, the makeup of the committee.
That being said, anything up at the dais before we put it out to public? Okay, to the public, do we have any comments or concerns or anything, uh, before we discuss it? No, anything online? Okay, bring it back.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, official resolution. Can you go up to the beginning? Receiving Resolution XX dash twenty-five, um, which is the resolution of the city council, the city of Escalon, establishing the Escalon Economic Development Committee and adopting the Economic Development Committee policy.
Do you have a second?
Second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And no nays. So we'll go to fifteen, which is similar, but for Measure P.
Yes, very similar staff report, newly formed Measure P committee. This came about through council, um, agenda request item, fully supported by the council. Um, we have created a similar policy, which lays out very similar things, but again, for this unique committee, which will really help the council connect broader into the community to get further ideas on desires, needs kind of in the community, as well as ways to potentially, um, spend the Measure P funds. And this will be a five-person committee comprised of residents and registered voters, residents of the city of Escalon and registered voters.
Again, um, out to the public, do you have, oh, I'm sorry, anything up here before we put it to the public? So go out to the public, any comments or questions or concerns? No? Okay, we'll go to online? All right, we'll bring it back. Um, any questions, concerns up here? All right. Do we have a, a motion then?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution XX twenty-five, establishing the Escalon Measure P Advisory Committee and adopting the Measure P Advisory Committee policy.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Uh, no nays. Okay, we'll go...
Item eleven.
Okay.
He may suggest just taking a brief recess. I have, um, indication that he is just minutes away, but, um, maybe take a brief recess until he arrives and you can make the presentation.
Okay, we'll take a little brief recess, I guess. Uh, we think five minutes or ten minutes?
You can just do it until he gets here.
Okay. Okay, we'll take a break, uh, recess till he gets here. He gets here, yeah. Very precise. Did I just took your pen again? Sorry. I came unprepared and my cellphone died.
Watch died.
It's really bad.
Turn around, he's upside.
He's going to walk straight to the podium, straight into the presentation.
We have to wait for, uh, Councilmember K.
Yeah, John's here.
Sorry, I had to go see you, John.
John, stop and take a breath. No, we have to wait for Councilmember K.
We're almost ready.
Do you need a water?
Yeah, all right.
You can't go two.
Yeah.
Make a breathe. Use restroom if you need to. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Waiting on you, Mr. K.
Online, they're having some issues here and everybody that comes up and talks.
All right, we're reconvening. See, for the people that don't know you, would you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm John.
Is it on?
Is it plugged in?
It should be.
Step one, is it plugged in?
It's plugged in, I know.
Step two, is it turned on?
All this public works praise and now we have public works.
Alrighty, top of the afternoon, Councilor Mayor, Ron Andom, the Transit Manager for the city. You know, the city for about twenty-five years. So, um, today I'm giving you an, our annual update that I normally present to council on just the performance of the transit system and then to answer any questions about E-Trans that the council may have. Um, just as a background, uh, E-Trans has been the city's public transit system since nineteen seventy-seven. There's two components to E-Trans. There is the local Escalon Dial-A-Ride service. Basically, you call, we'll send a bus, uh, within fifteen minutes and it goes anywhere within the Escalon city limits. And it also goes to Riverbank to connect to the S for those that want to travel within Riverbank or go to Oakdale or go to Modesto. And we make that transfer at Jacob Myers Park. The other service is Route thirty-five. It runs three trips a day between Escalon and Modesto. It stops at bus stops. You may see E-Trans bus stops throughout the city limits. And then it also deviates and go off route for those that make that request, uh, also within fifteen minutes in advance. Three trips run, uh, basically leaving Escalon at eight twelve in the morning, one twelve in the afternoon and four twelve again in the afternoon. It connects to the S and Ripon Blossom Express at Vintage Fair Mall, serves Kaiser, serves Target, serves Walmart and Regal Cinemas, and then basically comes back up McHenry. In addition to, um, those two services, we, uh, in December of twenty-two, when we're transitioning transit contractors, we launched E-Trans on the go. It's a partnership with Uber. And how that works is it's available seven days a week. Um, the user pays the first two dollars, then we pay the next ten dollars and then the user pays anything above ten dollars. And basically you can use the Uber program anywhere within Escalon, to, anywhere in Modesto, anywhere in Riverbank and anywhere in Oakdale. So it provides that additional mobility that E-Trans can't provide beyond its, uh, eight to five, Monday through Friday. And then last year, we launched Meo Car. Meo Car is a rural car sharing service. Uh, basically, we're subsidizing that service and there's a car parked at the Escalon Park and Ride Lot and it's available upon being approved by their processes. You can basically use that car for, I believe it's like four dollars an hour, up to thirty-five dollars a day. Um, we are in discussions on a possible amendment to that contract, to where we're going to add a second car and, uh, just some more additional performance metrics. It is a two-year pilot. That pilot ends June of twenty-six and then my next year's update, I'll give you a report on its performance and it's something that we wish to continue. E-Trans is funded through multiple funding sources. We give, receive no general fund for the service. Uh, basically, we use Transportation Development Act funds, Federal Transit Administration funds, Measure K, advertising, and then lately, um, additional state funding such as State of Good Repair, Low Carbon Transit Operations Program funding, which makes the bus system free, and SB one twenty-five. Last fiscal year, the transit system did perform one thousand two hundred and seventy-nine passenger trips, so that's slightly an increase from the previous fiscal year of one thousand one passenger trips. The Dial-A-Ride itself did about two hundred and seventy-five passenger trips and, uh, Route thirty-five did nine hundred and thirty-four passenger trips. E-Trans on the go did about seventy trips, uh, basically seventy vouchers were used. And Meo Car rented, uh, between April twenty-four and June of twenty-four, three rentals based on seven people who were signed up as members to the program. And the last part I just want to talk about is, uh, beyond what we provide, the San Joaquin Regional Transit District does provide bus service into the city limits, Monday through Friday, and that's via Route ninety-five. It connects people to Manteca and Stockton four times a day, timed connections to our Route thirty-five. There's also Van Go. It's a door-to-door service that almost acts like an Uber. It's available anywhere countywide. The fare starts at about four dollars and then it's fifty cents each mile traveled. Um, our efforts for this fiscal year, uh, is to basically complete the short-range transit plan, which we'll bring before council sometime this summer for council to review and we'll have options on how we can enhance the transit system, continue partnerships with the senior community such as Es- um, the Senior, the Escalon Senior Fund Bunch, Escalon Strong. And then we've also been doing special trips like on service to the farmer's market, um, when the farmer's market is operating, as well as some special Saturday trips as of creative ways to get ridership. We also did a holiday tour of the lights, which was very successful. And that should do it. Happy to answer any questions if there are any about E-Trans.
Any questions up here?
A couple of comments. Um, it's good to see you, John, normally, and just talk to you on the phone. But, you know, um, this year, and for twenty-one years I've lived here, I've really tried to take advantage of the transit system and, uh, that Meo Car program is really awesome. I mean, I, I think, uh, if, if there's any residents out there that want more information, uh, reach out and I can tell you about my experiences with Meo Car. Uh, my family was left without a vehicle due to vehicle accident and I signed up for Meo Car. It was really awesome. And I really appreciate everything you're doing to try to encourage more ridership with our seniors, working with the Senior Fund Bunch and Escalon Strong, so thank you for that.
And, um, and, uh, Mr. French's help has been very tremendous in getting those groups to get more involved with transit.
My, my only, um, comment, and if you may recall this or, or may not recall this, is one of the things we discussed last year was, um, adding a stop possibly, or ensuring that there was a stop by Orlando's, which it looks like there is currently, Stop Thirty-five?
Yes.
Or, I don't know if that's Stop Thirty-five or on Route thirty-five, but...
Those little triangles at the corner of Elizabeth and Jackson?
Yeah.
That's the Orlando stop.
Okay. Um, yeah, my only question is, we don't have a stop for McDonald's. And it, I know that that probably sounds funny, but I mean it, have serious because McDonald's is a place where seniors really like to gather and it might be an opportunity where a senior could, or anybody really could jump on the, the bus and go over and have some coffee and some breakfast at McDonald's. So, um...
I'd work with Public Works to see about if we could shift that, um, sign from country wood closer to the McDonald's.
Okay. But keep up the good work. I mean, ridership, I know, uh, every year, you pour your heart and soul into the, the transit system in Escalon and sometimes we don't get the numbers, but, you know, it's, it's definitely a labor of love and I'm starting to see the numbers uptick and really appreciate all of your hard work. And you mentioned it, that, that holiday lights presentation, or the holiday lights program on the buses. We had so much fun doing that and singing songs and so that was a lot of fun as well, so keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Um, I think you're doing a great job. I don't have any, really any questions, to be honest with you. Should, uh, ask the public here? Public have any questions for, um, the E-Trans and stuff? As far as like our different programs, anything? Alrighty, we'll bring it back to, check the online. Alrighty then, um...
I just have a, kind of a question.
Yeah.
Um, I was interested in the E-Trans on the go, the, pay the first two dollars of your Uber ride. You get the ten dollars, right? You cover the ten. Um, how can people get more information on that? Cause I know some students that might be interested in that one.
We do have it on the city's website, on the E-Trans page.
Okay.
Um, but we do have like a direct link... But we do have like a direct link, so EscalonEtrans.org.
Okay.
And they just download the voucher off the website. It attaches to your Uber profile.
Oh.
As long as the trips originate or end in Escalon, that's when the credits get applied.
Okay, thank you.
It shows up when you end the ride, you hit End the Ride, and it shows a $10 credit from City of Escalon.
Oh, interesting.
Pretty awesome.
Great, they're more technologically advanced than I am, so, thank you.
Of course.
Yeah.
Do we have to do anything for this? We have to...
Just a receipt update.
Okay. All right, well, any other questions at all?
We do have items 12 and 13 that, yeah, John can go over. When the council's done with questions on the...
Item 11. At one time, we were talking about possibly procuring a little trolley for an internal Escalon route. Do we have any update on that?
We have designed a kind of a promilatory route. We could, in theory, buy a vehicle, and that vehicle could be used. They have smaller trolleys, and we could use it in lieu of having our traditional cutaway buses. However, I was working with the city manager on developing kind of ultimately a plan that we can discuss with council to see if council's interested. I do want to preface that if we are to create like a dedicated route system, it may require the use of more local transportation funds, which historically the city have used to cover streets and roadway projects. And transit is starting to get fairly expensive, so I'm trying to do my best to, with what we have today...
Of course.
...find other outside funding sources so that you can still have LTF available for streets and roads. But if council would like to see more with that, we're happy to come back with a works paper on the concept.
This is Public Works Week, so we're not, we won't continue this conversation this week, so maybe at a later meeting we can talk about it.
All right, then we'll move on to number...
I'm sorry, Mayor, that was my...
Oh, yeah.
So I'll just add one thing. One of the things that John and I are trying to do is, we call them transit demonstrations. We're trying to get groups of people, young, old, whoever, to actually use the system to see, you know, what it is all about. We know there's, you know, sort of natural barriers to using any type of, you know, program or system, and so what we want to try to do is get people to actually use it, and then give us feedback on the system. And so we've been working with the senior group to basically, you know, program events so that they can use it, experience it, and then give us feedback. We feel like as soon as there's, if there's more familiarity with the overall program, we'll get better ridership as an amenity for the community. So if you have any thoughts on that, please share with us, but those are a couple of the things that we're working on.
Our next event is next Friday, and I believe we're going to go for ice cream.
Okay, so let's go to number 12, I guess, next.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. This one is to authorize the filing of the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program. We do need to get a resolution approved in order to access this funding. Basically, it's $1,700, and we use this funding to cover the fares from the passengers to ride E-Trans, which makes E-Trans free. We historically used to collect fares, but the effort in collecting fares was costing more than the fares we were generating. So by using these Low Carbon Transit Operations Program funding, it eliminates that burden and also eliminates a barrier to preventing people from using the transit system. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
You feel like that's been working well for you?
It has, yes.
Okay. Any questions up here? Any questions from the public? Any questions online? All right, we'll bring it back for a vote then, unless anyone wants to say something.
I'll move to approve Resolution XX25, which is the authorization for the execution of certifications and assurances, and authorized agent forms for the Low Carbon Transit Operations Program for a free fare on each fare ends in the amount of $1,700.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. And no nays. So we'll go on to number 13.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This one is to consider authorizing the filing of a Transportation Development Act claim for federal, excuse me, for fiscal years 2025 through 2026. This is the primary funding source that supports E-Trans, but then is also used by Public Works for bikeway projects, pedestrian projects, and roadway projects. This fiscal year, we're allocated 502,000. We are under SJCOG policy required to use 25% of the LTF for the transit system, so we've only budgeted 25% of the LTF, which is 122,774. And then that also includes 20,000 of just transit capital. And then Streets and Roads will get 348,323, and then the bikes and pedestrian would be 11,439. In addition, we get state transit assistance funding, which is solely used for the transit system, and that's $3,624. And we're just asking the council to authorize staff to file the claim with the San Joaquin Council of Governments for fiscal year '25-'26 for Transportation Development Act funds. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Any questions up here? Any questions from the public? Any questions online? We'll bring it back for a vote here, unless there's any other comments. Okay. Just need to make a motion.
I will make the motion to approve Resolution Number XX25, or Resolution of the City Council of the City of Escalon, authorizing the filing of a claim with the San Joaquin County, San Joaquin Council of Governments for allocations of Transportation Development Act funds for fiscal year '25 and '26.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say nay. No nays. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting here, John.
Appreciate your time. Well, we're on to council communications. What time do we have?
It's under 8 o'clock.
I feel like we're making a good time here.
With four minutes to shave off, we took a bathroom.
We get there by 8:00.
I would have been home by now if John would have been here on time. Just kidding, John.
Well, I'll start with Councilman Kay.
I'd like to congratulate Officer Gunter on completing his field training in such a timely fashion. I know that's quite an accomplishment for most officers, so kudos to him for doing such a great job. Aside from that, I really don't have much, and since we're wrapping this up pretty quickly, hopefully we can.
All right, well, I'll go on to Councilman Strumman.
Well, we're going to be here for a while. No, just kidding. I do have some items I'd like to discuss real quick. One is staff, maybe not the next meeting, because you're going to be on vacation, but one of the things this council requested was quarterly updates on wastewater treatment plant and surface water projects. I know it's kind of a slow point, but I think we owe the community a quarterly update on both of those projects. Also, last meeting on our LLD discussion, I brought up about notifying the members of those LLDs, in particular, Eliterra Estates. I just wanted to check a status update on those formal notifications.
Postcard notifications have gone out to all district...
Last...
All district residents last Thursday. They went out in the mail.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again for the reminder about farmer's market this week. Should be a good time. Kind of want to piggyback on to what Councilmember Kay was saying. Kudos to Officer Gunter on really knocking that FTO program out of the park. Appreciate all of his hard work and hearing positive things about him and the community. But more importantly, congratulations to you, Selinda, for getting offered probation. You know, we've said it before, and we'll probably continue to sing your praises, we appreciate all of the hard work that you're putting into this position, and I feel like the amount of financial reporting that we're providing our residents is probably the best financial reporting that this city has seen in a long time. And so, and it makes our job easier as council members, but also increases greater transparency among the community. And no offense, city manager, but it's all because of you. And so, thank you for all of your hard work.
It is a team effort. I must say, we have quite a lot of collaboration with everybody involved. It just looks like it's all on me.
And there's also some sacrifices that your husband also makes, so I really want to thank you as well, Mark, because really, she's riding the ship, and it's really, really appreciated. So I appreciate all the support you provide her at home as well. The, two more things, then I'll be done. This is our last meeting in May. Next Friday is the last day of school for a lot of Escalon students, so really want to say to the teachers and staff and students of Escalon Unified Schools, have a great summer, stay safe out there, but also congrats to all of our local high school, soon-to-be high school graduates, and all college graduates. It's a big world. Might as well pull up your boots and go after it. So hope everybody has a fantastic summer. The last thing I wanted to bring up was a discussion about a future agenda item. Hopefully, we can get this on the next agenda. But there was recently a program that was presented to the rec program for a yoga program specifically for seniors at the community center. And so that, the organizer of that reached out to me because she recognizes that typically, when it comes to anything related to seniors within the community, that this body, the council, waives the use of any use fees related to the community center. And so what she intended to do, what she intends to do is to, instead of charging, it's, so it's specifically designed for seniors. It'll be two days a week, and it won't impact the senior lunch program, but she intends, instead of charging a fee, she wants to just make it a free will offering. That way, there's no price tag, and seniors can show up, they can attend senior yoga program for an hour. She's thinking it'll be Wednesdays and Fridays, because currently, the, there is a chair yoga program that the library holds on Monday, either at one of the local churches or at the library. And so Terry, this yoga instructor, has worked out with Annette, the other yoga instructor, to make sure that there's no conflicts. But, bless you, Frank, but I brought it up to the city manager, and the city manager feels like if we're waiving the use of the fees of the community center for this particular program, that is an action that the council needs to take. And so if I can get consensus on that, it will be presented at a future council meeting to waive the use of the fees of the community center.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the yoga instructor, and I'd be interested in listening to the program and possibly waiving those fees.
Looks like you have consensus then. One thing I would want to make sure we look at is the other programs too, potentially.
As far as what?
Well, I don't think we can offer one, not the others, right?
Well, we do, we do offer, so typically, if it's for seniors, we don't charge fees associated with the community center, so...
Okay, I got you.
There...
So I wanted to stay in line with just the...
Yeah, because it's specifically related to seniors. Now...
Okay.
There could be an issue because some, we have other programs where people charge, but because this program is specifically tied to seniors...
Gotcha.
That's why I'm asking the council to consider waiving the fees of use of the community center.
I think we have consensus on it, so...
And just to set the conversation for the council's future consideration, the city generally, for these programs that are run out of the community center, charges 25% of the fees or costs collected from the instructor for coverage of, you know, cleaning and overhead of the community center. So the suggestion here is waiving that 25% for a senior-run program, senior-run yoga program for use of the community center, consistent with prior action by the council to waive fees for senior use at the community center.
And with that presentation, when, or when you give it, could, is it possible to get maybe, I don't know if it's Public Works, you guys do the cleaning, or...
We only do the cleaning when more cleans needed prior than, other than the janitors that go in and clean after the events and things like that.
So these are general, okay, janitors that would normally go through there anyways? Okay.
So like, right now, the, there's no charge for the senior lunch program. There's no charge for the use of the senior fund bunch, so it just kind of follows, as Jalen mentioned, it follows the same format.
I just want to make sure we're being consistent, that's all.
I appreciate the consideration, and with that, I don't have anything else.
Proton?
Just real quick, I will continue seeing the praises of our staff and coming together and as a team to run the ship forward here. Michelle, completing the training in this past, this recent past, even though you are a very seasoned in the community administrative assistant and all of that background, I'm sure it's a big difference coming into the city, and I'm glad that you're fully on board with us now, and welcome, welcome on again. Congratulations to Selinda for passing probation, and again, thank you for, you know, all you've done so far. And then congratulations to Officer Gunter for passing his probation as well, as I'm very kind of excited of this new officer coming on. I like to see a seasoned officer coming on to help the young guys too, so very excited. But it is Public Works Recognition Week, so... Yes, sir. And so, thank you to Public Works and to Justin, Jake, the crew. Every time you go out, we'll have the, like, for example, farmer's market on Wednesday, those shades don't put themselves up, and so things don't get done by themselves. It's Public Works that's kind of making the city work a lot of the times. And if you're driving through and it's a rainy day and there's flooded streets, it's Public Works that's out there getting that done. And you are part of the community, and I appreciate you putting yourself and being part of our family, not just here in the office, but out on the street every day, and to the community. And I back up, we do need that wastewater treatment plant update, because every time you flush your toilet, Public Works is involved in that as well. So we need to make sure that we're taking care of our Public Works. Please think about them every time you flush that toilet, or every time you go out. So with that, oh, and congratulations to Class of 2025. Please be careful while those kids are out on the street running around either that night, but in summertime, we intend to have more kids out on the street, enjoying, Escalon enjoying our parks, taken care of by Public Works. And so just be careful of those kids for the next three months, running around in the evening hours. So with that, that's it, thank you.
Well, there's not much else I can add. Well, there's not much else I can add. I mean...
I think there probably is, if you want to look.
Just don't say Public Works or something. Don't say Public Works.
I mean, I think you're all doing a great job. You're collaborating, you're working as one unit, and that's how we get things done and do it in a timely way and do it for the right reasons. So all I can say is I appreciate it, and I appreciate also the public for the way you're conducting yourselves when you come in and ask for things or ask questions or concerns. You know, we're all up here to help you. I look at it just like they look at, we're working for you, not the other way around. So I appreciate all of your input, and that's all I have for tonight.